Okay, we're gonna open the Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 at 6:03.
I'll do roll call if you're ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens is absent. Commissioner Barr?
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Vice Chair St. Martin?
Here.
Chairman Tinker?
Here.
Okay, we'll rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. You're looking for me, then? Yeah. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Okay. And do we have any conflicts from the members? Okay. Okay, there's, we all have the public comment period for items that are not on the agenda. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There are three-minute time limits on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the Commission from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments.
I don't have any requests to speak for this portion.
Okay, then we'll deal with item number one, approval of the minutes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve the minutes of, for May 28th, 2019.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair St. Martin?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes.
Second item is to conduct a public hearing and consider conditional use permit, CUP 2019-0032, a request to allow a fitness center at 652 E Sixth Street, Unit C, in the commercial general zone. And I'll ask staff to...
Thank you, Chairman Tinker. Commission, before you tonight, you have a request to consider a conditional use permit to allow a fitness center at 652 E Sixth Street, Unit C, in the commercial general zone. As you're aware, the municipal code of the city of Beaumont requires approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission for a fitness center to operate. The proposed facility is currently operating in the city of Banning, but would like to relocate to the city of Beaumont. The facility will offer personal training and group fitness classes, typically Monday through Friday mornings at 5:00, 6:00, and 9:00 a.m., and evenings at 5:00, 6:00, and 7:00 p.m. A Saturday morning class will also be offered at 8:00 a.m. Personal training will be offered by appointment. There will be three employees at the facility, and a typical class size is about 20 people. The proposed location is a three-unit multi-tenant center at the northwest corner of East Sixth Street and Maple Avenue. Adjacent uses include multi-tenant buildings to the north, east, and south, and the city hall parking lot to the west. All of these are in the commercial general zone. The building is approximately 4,500 square feet and is currently occupied by Free Holy's Restaurant in Unit A, with Unit B being vacant and Unit C the proposed location for the fitness center. This property is in commercial general, and a wide variety of retail, professional, medical, and personal service businesses are allowed. The proposed fitness center is considered a personal service and is consistent with the land use category. There are 42 shared parking spaces on the site. Free Holy's has been operating at the site for many years, with several different types of businesses periodically occupying the other suites. The site is parked at approximately a ratio of one space per 107 square feet of building. Based on the proposed class times, the volume of business that's observed at the center, staff has determined that the parking on-site is adequate to accommodate the proposed use. This location is suitable, and consideration of a conditional use permit allows for the periodic review of this use if the Commission so chooses, and provides a mechanism for revocation of approvals through the public hearing if the business operations begin to create adverse impacts or become detrimental to the community. The findings required for this conditional use permit are in the staff report. All of the findings can be made in a positive manner. Staff is recommending the Commission hold a public hearing and approve conditional use permit number CUP 2019-0032, subject to the findings herein and the proposed conditions of approval. Staff is available if you have any questions, and the project applicants are also available in the audience.
Chairman St. Martin?
No questions.
Attorney Barr?
Just, what kind of signage are they gonna have?
So I believe they have box signs out there on-site still, so it'd either be a panel replacement or it would be something that would go just over their building. Anything that would be proposed, whether it's a panel change-out or new signage, would have to come through the planning department. We'd have to review and approve it prior to installation. And they may be able to answer if you want to know specifics about signage.
Okay, at this time then, at 6:08, I will open this up to public hearing. Okay, if the applicant's here, now's your time to shine.
I have, I have three requests for item two. First speaker is Harry Kould?
No, that's for the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's for the next one, the south side.
Oh, they put item two.
Yeah, they're here for the...
Okay. It has the wrong thing on there.
I think the wrong guy's gonna come up and... Yeah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jonna Wyndham. Me and my business partner, Brandon Polk, are here. We are hoping that you will approve this. We have been in business for about two and a half years in the city of Banning. We have a successful business there, and we just need larger space. There's not anything that we have found in the city of Banning or even here on busy thoroughwares where it would be, or thoroughways that would be beneficial for us. This is 1,000 more square feet. We're an expanding business, and so we're just hoping that you'll accept our proposal and agree to... Yeah, our proposal. No one else to say? Thank you.
Couldn't say it any better than that.
Any other commissioners?
The fact that they're serving food next door, is that gonna be a problem?
Not at all.
Are you gonna affect their business?
I don't think so. Free Holy's serves healthy options, and so I don't see where we would be in effect. I mean, I think anything could come in, potentially in effect our business, you know? Smoke shops and things like that, you know?
You know, I was thinking the same thing.
I'll eat there. He'll eat there. He'll eat chicken.
It's ironic that you want to be in a fitness center right next to a Mexican food joint. I mean, that wouldn't work well for me, so...
Workout and then chips and salsa.
Exactly.
Okay, is there any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, as far as the signage, what are your plans?
Just what she said. Currently, there's a box sign. We have currently a large sign that's our logo in the city of Banning. We are probably going to hang that inside the building and just maintain that box sign on the outside. Right now, we do not have any plans to modify that. The owner hasn't seen, like, the owner to the building hasn't even, you know, offered suggestions or even...
Yeah, just basically the panel that's there, like, the discount, that nice scent. Basically remake one with our logo and it be on it. So that goes out, then ours basically goes and replaces it.
And that does come through staff, so we would, you know, get to see it and sign off before they do the panel change-out. And then the center, since it has box signs for each of the units, typically we would stick with that until the property owner wanted to change out all of the signs, so at least it would be consistent, and we don't have two box signs and one regular wall sign or something like that, so we wouldn't...
We don't have any objection to the box sign at this time.
It'd be nice to have, you know, channel letter signs throughout everybody. That's something for another day and time when we look at the sign codes, so...
We have them available, so when you're ready for to hang it, we can.
Now, there's a, I'm sorry.
And what is, what are you anticipating as far as opening? If all the approvals are...
July 15.
July 15? Okay.
If not.
Is there not an elevated sign on the front of that place? It's on two steel posts?
Oh, on the street, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, a pole sign, yeah.
There is an elevated sign, but it currently is displaying the discount, the discount storage signage.
Okay.
So that's where we would be going through the city's permit and your process as far as changing out the discount to beyond fitness sign.
Any of that would come through planning, whether it was just the wall panel or if it was the pole sign panel, they would...
Still have to come to you.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we just don't want some, you know, glowing green whatever out there, you know?
Uh-oh.
No, that's why we have sign and, sign and joy.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:14. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
That we approve the conditional use permit 2019-0032 as stated.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve CUP 2019-0032.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Vice Chair St. Martin?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes. You're good to go.
But if I'm eating lunch at Free Holy's, don't try to get me over there to work it off. Ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, you guys can go.
Okay, item number three is proposed amendment to Table 17-03-3, permitted uses in the base zone district and adopted of Chapter 17.18 regarding wireless telecommunion facilities. And we'll hear from staff.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The discussion on telecommunication, wireless telecommunication facilities, went before the City Council on April 16th of this year, and it was mostly discussing the small cell devices in the right-of-way, but it was determined that guidelines and standards were needed for private property. So staff did prepare a draft ordinance and modifications to the zoning code table. Currently, the zoning code allows stealth facilities in commercial manufacturing and recreation and conservation zones with a conditional use permit. And non-stealth facilities are currently allowed in commercial zones with a conditional use permit. So the draft ordinance is proposing to update some of the language in the table to more current language to telecommunication facilities. So we are recommending that communication facilities be changed to wireless telecommunication facilities, that we also delete the row of the table that calls out cellular communication facilities because it's duplicative, that we update cellular stealth to read as wireless telecommunication facility, and to delete non-stealth because typically we want to see disguised facilities, camouflaged facilities throughout the city. We are also... We also identified that the overlay zone district does not include non-stealth or the duplicative language, and it does call out for wireless telecommun, or say cellular communication facility stealth. So we figured that that was adequate, but we can change that. So the new ordinance addresses several items regarding wireless communication facilities, including definitions, supplemental requirements, the height. And basically, the ordinance refers back to the underlying zoning. Typically, in the commercial and manufacturing zones, you're limited to a height between 35 to 50 feet, depending on the zone. With most wireless communication facilities, we typically see heights over that. So most applications are either gonna trigger a minor or a major variance, and they're typically over 5 feet, 50 feet high. So staff has not added language, but can add language if the Commission desires to provide an exception for wireless mass. The ordinance also does call out setbacks from residential structures and does address small cell devices in the right-of-way, which would require a certificate of public convenience of necessity, an administrative plot plan review, and an encroachment permit. All the other major facilities would require a conditional use permit consistent with our existing code. We are proposing to take an update of this ordinance to the City Council at the July 2nd meeting. And at this time, we would like to recommend that the Planning Commission open the public hearing and take public testimony, and then continue the item to the July 23rd Planning Commission meeting so that we could have the full Commission comment and review prior to making a recommendation to the City Council. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if may.
Okay. Commissioner St. Martin?
And we, just for the, even though we're gonna open and continue the public hearing, we would like to go ahead and start the dialogue if the Commission would be so inclined, because I think we can hear from you guys and digest some of this, update the council, and then when we come back on July 23rd, since we won't have a first meeting in July, hear from our other commissioners that should be present and finish the dialogue before we make a full presentation to the council. So if you guys would be inclined to do that, that'd be great.
Is there a draft now of what you're proposing?
Yes, that's included as an attachment to your staff report.
Yeah, if you, it's towards... On down several pages.
It actually is.
Or if you have questions about things in particular, we can point you to that if that would be...
The draft ordinance starts on page seven of the staff report.
Paul, while you're looking at, let me ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
You make reference to stealth. What are we talking about, stealth?
So camouflage or disguised facility typically, you know, monopom, monopine, monoclyptus, so that it's camouflaged to blend in with...
Okay, should we maybe define that a little more so that the public has an understanding of what we're talking about with stealth?
We can, and it's also with the ordinance walking the fine line, with we don't want to necessarily call out everything.
No, I understand that.
Stealth, but yeah, the steffing would be, like Carol said, palms, pines, eucalyptus.
I'm just saying, maybe there's a way to just include that, maybe there's an example of what stealth is referring to.
Sure.
Without defining ourselves into a box.
Into a box, right, right.
So there is a definition in the proposed ordinance for a camouflage facility, which means any wireless telecommunication facility which is designed to blend into the surrounding land. Typically, one that is architecturally integrated into a building or concealing, other concealing structure, also known as a disguised or stealth facility.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay.
The other... I'm thinking stealth something else, so... The other thing you had, you mentioned small cell uses in the right-of-way. What are we talking about, small cell?
So typically, it's the small cell devices that are put on fixture facilities.
Streetlights.
Streetlights, utility poles that are within the public right-of-way.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Barr?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing at 6:20 regarding... Let me get, let me get my act here. Well, we probably won't get my act together, but... Proposed amendment to Table 17.03-3, permitted uses in the base zone for the district in addition to Chapter 17.18 regarding wireless telecommunion facilities. Public hearing is open now at 6:20.
I have three requests to speak. First speaker is Harry Kould.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Harry Kouldy, and I live at 1058 Belle Drive in Cherry Valley. I am a landowner in the city of Beaumont, and I'm here to approve or to promote cell towers because the 5G technology is definitely not in the future. It's already been used, and we are falling, the United States is basically falling behind in the development of the new technology. And there are so many rules, regulations, and ordinance against doing something which needs a long time, and I feel that this is for public use. These towers are for public use. And in the principle of eminent domain, I would suggest that you actually use that part of it to improve or to expedite the development of these towers, which definitely will be sooner or later, you know? But I hope that you will actually approve that.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Doug Jones.
My name is Doug Jones. My address is 899 Tammer's Road, Palm Springs. I've hired a consultant to get to shed a little bit of light on the distances that you will be considering for cell towers from residential structures. A lot of people are afraid because they don't understand, and that's why I brought him on. And I just think if people better understood what these frequencies are made of and how they're propagated, they won't be so afraid. A fear of mine was, I know the city, and they've really been working on this. They've gone to different cities, different counties, and they've looked at their distance from residential. And a lot of these codes that they're pulling from are old codes. And I hate this word with a passion, but I think we need a more progressive wireless code in the state of California. And the reason is, is, I mean, back in the day, 20 years ago, cell towers were for cell phones and for voice communication. That's still there, but now they're gonna start competing with DISH and spectrum services for internet and television, and they're gonna be bringing the 5G over these antennas at half the price of these other companies. So, you know, if we just take a look at it with an open mind and maybe listen to the American Cancer Society and people like this and realize that, you know, that these aren't the boogeyman that everybody thinks they are. And another thing is, Mr. Harry Kould's property has a eucalyptus forest on it. It's off Edgar Avenue, and that's pretty much what's, or at least, I came to the city and I started talking to him about this a couple of months ago. And the trees are 85 feet tall. And if you put a eucalyptus stealth, cell tower in this eucalyptus grove, you wouldn't be able to find it, because, I mean, the trees are 85, 90 feet tall, and it would just, you wouldn't be able to see it. So there's a lot of locations that really lend itself well. Another thing is Beaumont has huge tracts of residential zone properties. And when this 5G comes out, you're gonna need a tower in the middle of that residential zone property. In today's code, you're not able to do that. And most cities are widening the areas to allow these towers because of the 5G and the use. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ryan Eaton.
Ryan Eaton with EBI Consulting, and address would be 1501 Newport, 1501... Oh, let's see. Oh, my address is 3902 Ingram Street in San Diego, California. My business is in Newport Beach. Basically, I'm a, I'm an expert in the zoning and environmental aspects of all cell carriers, as well as landlord consents. So I'm pretty familiar with, I've probably been on about 80% of the major cell sites in Southern California throughout the last eight years, as well as about 20 other states and doing other projects. So I have created basically a report and a few talking points, but all the information is nothing I made up. It's all got references, and they're all from basically government sites as far as, you know, the Disease Center, OSHA, pretty much. They're all listed on there. I'm gonna make this real sweet. I had this whole spiel to go, but pretty much the type of emissions it releases is not the emissions what everyone thinks it is a lot of times. It is not the X-rays and everything like that. What it basically, it's not, it's not like a power plant. That's what people think of when they think of antennas and all these harmful emissions. Now, it does release emissions, but to be perfectly honest, like, even our bodies release some sort of emissions and heat and all that. The type that the cell phones have are mostly like ultraviolet radiation, tanning beds, natural sunlight, even power lines and kitchen microwaves have this stuff as well, so... There's measurements in here, there's a lot of documents. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. This does, seems like at another time. But I would advise you to read through everything here. If you have any questions or need more explanations on any of this, I'm happy to come back and give you more detail. And I gave some examples of actually hearing from before, stealth antennas, small cells. There's actually examples in these slides that I provided as well. I have talking points. I didn't list out everything. It's real quick pictures and everything, but you'll see as far as the distances, in different cities labeled too. Places I had one, I had one as a different state. I think it was St. Paul, Minnesota. But everything else is La Mesa. I don't know if I put the other one in, but like Beverly Hills. These are all places with very strict zoning rules in some, in some areas stricter than probably here. And they, and they're allowing certain distances and everything like that. You know, as well in this report, in the main part of the report, I did a theoretical modeling. Now, unfortunately, I cannot give any of my actual reports, but I did the best worst-case scenario modeling for a standard, a little above, I would say, a little above average what a normal, like, antenna structure or fake mona tree or monopine or any of those examples. So the information is there. I'm not gonna go through it at this time. It doesn't seem like it's the right time. I apologize for what I said earlier. But you have the information. I can give, at the bottom of this report, there is my contact information if somebody needs to get to me and want more detail. But to be perfectly honest, you can verify all this information, not even by me, but by government sites for the most part. This information was taken from those sites recently, as recently as this week.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Do you have the information?
Yeah, we have, I have the electronic versions. And so because the public hearing is open, staff will be taking written, verbal, other types of comments. And then when we come back, we can compile all that we have received for you
Okay.
to have for the record, you know, both through City Clerk's office for current of things and for you guys for your consideration.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
No other speakers.
Okay, so at 6:30, we're gonna leave this public hearing open. And it will be open until the 23rd of July at the Planning Commission meeting at that time.
Correct.
Did I do that right?
You did.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just trying.
No, you're doing extremely well, Bob. You're gonna get it next year, too.
Okay, so now we're gonna move to item number four.
Are we, are we gonna, are we done with discussion for now? Do you have any more direction for staff?
I was hoping to say something.
No, I'm sorry, go for it.
First of all, it's not our first rodeo with the cell towers. We've been down this path before. It's not so much emissions that's a concern. It's aesthetics that's a concern. When someone spends $400,000 for a home, they don't want to be looking at a cell tower. So to come in here and say that we have nothing to worry about, we should be just opening this up to these telecommunication towers is a little bit pushy. opening this up to these telecommunications, telecommunications towers, is a little bit pushy as far as I'm concerned. We need to, we will discuss it at the next meeting when this thing comes up, but I found it a little offensive that, you know, this is what we should be doing. You're thinking, no, I'm speaking. We, we have to look at aesthetics, we have to think about the people in our community, not, not the businesses that want to set up these towers. That's all I have to say.
And, and just so the commission knows, staff has surveyed several, like probably ten or more surrounding cities, twelve, thank you, Carol, Carol's worked very hard on this. And so at the next meeting, we will provide for you the list of cities and the regulations, you know, whether they allow it in residential or not, if they do, how they allow it, we have it in, in a table prepared. So we have considered that. Currently, the zoning code does not allow for cell towers in residential zones, and we carried that through to the new ordinance. So we aren't proposing adding anything new to it or taking anything away, we're leaving it as is and just beefing up the aesthetic standards that Commissioner Tinkers.
I'm looking at a picture that shows a residential house in seventy-five feet away.
Right, that I believe is from Palm Springs, right, so.
But it was presented to us, so.
Understood. So we'll bring you back additional information, so you can have it if you choose to digest it or not, or what you want to do with it, but we have gone the gamut on looking at everything, but we thought at this point, being consistent with what the code currently speaks to and just beefing up the aesthetic standards and maybe giving some consideration to height so that the cell towers that do want to locate in a commercial or manufacturing zone can get that extra height that they need maybe without having to go through a CUP, or, or we could leave it with this CUP or variance and still come to you guys. You know, either way, we have, we have the information across the board, so we can move with you guys however you would like to, to move with it.
You know, if I may, I, I agree with Commissioner St. Martin, we have been dealing with this for a long time. One of the biggest problems we've had is we're not opposed to technology. What we are opposed is, like Commissioner said, guy spends four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to buy a house, and some guy wants to put a cell tower within two hundred foot of his house. We, we're living in this community, you're not. So we're going to look at the aesthetics of this. Now, we also are not opposed to looking at new technology, however, we're, we're, we're going to protect the residential areas. And I heard the comment you made earlier, and, and I appreciate your comment that, yeah, 5G is coming, we all know that, but we're going to have to put a tower in the middle of these developments. I, I'm going to tell you, that's going to be a tough fight, straight up, because we have a tremendous amount of people in this community that are not going to pay the money they're paying for houses, and all of a sudden, look at them, there's a cell tower in their backyard. Whether you sell the 5G program or not, that's, that's up to you, and I understand the technology, it's just that I understand where we're coming from. We're not opposed to technology, I, I'm not opposed to height increase in commercial areas, we're, we're willing to look at it, but I got to tell you, don't come in and try to sell your program too hard in a residential area. That, that's going to be a fight, and we historically have sided with residents in that, that situation. So, I'm not telling you it's not, it's not impossible, but I'm going to tell you, this in the residential area is going to be an uphill battle. Any other, did I cover that? Okay.
Thank you.
That's kind of where we're at, we've been down this road before, so.
So noted.
Okay, is there any other comment on, any other thing I need to do on this?
No, we're going to leave the public comment period open, like you said, and we can move to the next item when the commission is ready.
Okay, we're going to, item number four, request for a request, consider a request for a one-year extension of time to the approval of plot plan PP 2018 dash 013.
Thank you, Commissioners. The request before you tonight is a request for a one-year extension of time to a plot plan that was approved August 14th, 2018. This is a little infill site that's adjacent to the Lowe's facility down off Vilien Fourth Street. They are actually in the process of going through plan check, and they have, you know, every intention on building, but they just haven't been able to complete their, their plan check yet, and so they don't want the clock to run out. So their request is simply to grant the extension even though they anticipate that either slightly before or slightly after their expiration would occur, that they'll be pulling permits.
Commissioners?
I don't.
No questions.
No questions. I don't have a question on it, but there's a comment that I want to make about the area that this is in. And Commissioner St. Martin brought it up last time, one of the things that we, we seem to run into, and it's, it's not a criticism, trust me, but when we talk about something that's down in the vario, and we say, okay, there's the residents, they're not required to be notified, it's going to be that this commission's feelings that even though the ordinance doesn't require it, but if we're, if we're making an issue, or like we just went through last month with, with the, with the water lines and all of that kind of stuff, I think we would feel a whole lot better if the residents in the area are notified. I, I realize the ordinance doesn't require it.
They are notified. So when this was originally before you, anything that comes to you guys for action does require a public notice, so we would publish in the newspaper and send out the three hundred foot notice. For this, for the continuance, it doesn't require it?
No, I, I understand that, but I, I, one of the things that, and I, and I'm just using this to.
Sure.
To open up the pulpit here a little bit, is when we discussed the, 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 the storage yard for construction equipment and the pipelines and all of that, which I didn't have a problem with, but Commissioner St. Martin did have a problem with the fact when he asked you, did we tell the other people around there? And the answer was, well, it's not required by code. I, I understand that, but all I'm suggesting is if we get something down in the vario, let's think about, even though if we're not required to notify them, let's notify the residents.
Sure.
You know, it, it's just something that, that we would feel bad about. Okay? Any comment on this one?
No, you're right on, Bob. That's, you're right on the money.
Okay, so we have a request, a one-year extension.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a first and a second to approve the one-year extension on PP 2018 dash 013.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Vice Chair St. Martin?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes. Okay, item, I need to get somebody up here who keeps moving this computer for me. Item number five, conditional use permit, CUP 2001 seven dash zero 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 one, a request to establish an outdoor recreational vehicle storage facility on a two-four-point-seven-seven acre site located on the south side of Brookside Avenue, west of Deodoro Road, in a residential single-family zone, and adoption of a negative declaration.
Thank you. So this item was actually scheduled back in, let me look here, I think it was back in May, and the applicant requested it be continued to the June meeting, we did not have a June 11th meeting, so automatically the continuance request would roll so we can hear it at this meeting. Since that time, the applicant has contacted and submitted an email request that the commission continue the item indefinitely. They're working with the Water District on some issues, and they're not sure how long it's going to take, so instead of continuing meeting to meeting, they've just requested it to be continued indefinitely, they will notify us when their issues are solved, and then we'll re-agendize it and re-notice it, does require public notice, so we'll send out those notices again to everybody and put it back here for you guys. So, the staff's recommendation would be to continue the item indefinitely.
Okay, I have a question on this.
Sure.
And, and Paul, help me out here, isn't this in the Sunny Cal Development?
It's on the south side, so south side of Brookside Avenue, just on top of, or adjacent to the, I believe it's Cherry Acres RV Campground or something. Called, okay, Colorado River.
Oh, it's that far down, then?
Yeah, it's, it's almost at the northwest end of the city boundary.
Okay, I, I went out and drove around, and I kept thinking, this has got to be right in the middle of Sunny Cal.
You almost can't see it from, from the road, if you guys want to go out there sometime before we here, we can do a little tour, but yeah, it's, it's south side of Brookside all the way west.
West of the Colorado River?
Just sits right on top of it. So, you know where the, the house is with the, they do the dirt bike?
Yeah.
It's right next to that, yeah.
Oh, okay, now I know, yeah, now I know where they're at.
Yeah, like I said, you really can't see it from, you got to kind of get down in there.
You actually got to get into the RV park to almost look back at it, don't you?
Right.
Or go up on Brookside on the bridge.
If you were up high, you could see down to it, but from street level, like we, we drove it several weeks ago, and when you're driving, you kind of have to, because there's trees and all that everywhere, but, yeah, so.
Okay, so what we're going to do here is we're going to continue the public hearing to a date to be determined.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So.
Move to approve it.
I have a first and a second to continue the public hearing to a date to be determined by the Planning Department.
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Vice Chair St. Martin?
Yes.
Chairman Tinker?
Yes. Okay, so now at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Community Development Director for her comments.
Thank you. Not many comments tonight, appreciate all the discussion. We will not have a meeting July, first meeting of July, which I think is the ninth. We don't have any items that will be ready to go. We will meet again on July 23rd, and I believe when Nicole sent out the, the calendar invite, we had five responses that that would work, but if one, one no, okay, so we have four responses that will work, but if you, if anything comes up in the next week or two, let us know, so before we send out any of the public notices for those items, we can always cancel the meeting if we haven't sent out the items.
My wife's using that date to make sure I come home from vacation earlier, so.
Okay.
She says, don't you have a Planning Commission meeting at the end of the month? Uh, yeah, she says, well, we need to be home by then.
Right. And same, in August, I'll let you know now, we will only have a first meeting of the month, and I believe it's August 6th or somewhere around there. I, no, that's City Council's August 6th, so it'd be the 13th. Council is going to have a special workshop of some kind, at least that's what I've been hearing at the, on the 27th, which would be our second meeting, so you can plan for the other part of your vacation, maybe the end of August.
I'm trying to, and this is not part of the record, I'm a new grandpa this next week.
Fantastic.
Yeah, my first grandbaby was born last week.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, little boy, and he's a little stud, I'm telling you. Yeah, and, and I'll, you know, I'll be here on the, the end of July meeting, I can't be here on the first.
Right, so we, yeah, we won't have one July 9th, so just the 23rd, we'll send out something or whatever we normally do.
Okay, so then I'm going to close this meeting, but we still have the one meeting continued, the public, one public hearing.
Yeah, and that'll be the, that'll be at the same, the second meeting in July, so the 23rd, that will come back again and we'll still have it open.
So if we have nothing else, I'm going to close this meeting. Okay, at 6:45 on today's date, we will end the Planning Commission meeting.